I saw them digging up where we had that bean, the vine. I'm sure they've been in there.
Are you going to be grateful that time?
It'll be quick.
I stopped watching the coverage of that Texas broadcast.
I was going to ask about that.
It's terrifying.
What are you doing?
Well, you... Floods, it's personal.
I wonder if they want to deal with it. So they have no idea, I guess. How would you ever know?
They have town, everybody from Polynesian. Jones probably downtown this year and next year.
Yeah, thank you. That's good.
I think he's got some tax returns or something. I can't help Jones getting telecrash on the right road.
Oh, yeah. They still like to chill there. It's on their property downtown.
Yeah, no, I know they can.
They got children, October, next month.
She's going to stop so that I can see.
Everyone doesn't like that. Everyone doesn't like you.
Maybe you like you.
See, where I introduce you.
That's one of the favorite people out there. Everybody is with you.
No.
There's nothing missing.
Everybody's got it with us.
The only project I came up and made is... If I classified it as everyone was in a hurry, well, you got it. That's it. That trail that on the far side of the lake, everyone liked.
There has been zero complaints. My complaint is that some people still walk on the road. What are you doing on the road? But no, there's no way. Me, Larry, that's down when I wish, but there's... Just through Facebook, me and I are just Facebook buddies. I mean, complaints about everything I've heard is just like, listen. That's how it works.
And when people expect a return on investment in parks, no such thing. We never expect that.
We don't expect return on... That's not a bunch of anything that returns ago.
Return is, it's a great thing for people in the community.
Who's sitting around?
Yeah, quality of life, the return on investment.
Usually taxpayer money for taxpayers. What is these businesses want more to improve their lives? Jeff, do you see that?
He gets messed up. He got confused with what you... He thought you were saying, he thought you were saying that there was no, there should be a return.
Yeah.
When you were answering somebody else's topic.
I was asking her what she was thinking. Yeah. Which is, I'm the last person on council that asked what would come on. The one that was standing there. It's what kind of hard I ever get in. Harris went right into the first time because his head shit. He's like, oh my God, I'm so out of shape.
That's a target.
It's hot logic in the gym, so you're on the check.
Are we ready? Okay. Welcome everyone to Elizabeth Town City Council Regular Meeting for July 7th, 2025. And I'd like to ask Councilmember Tony Bishop if you'd lead us in the indication, please.
May we pray. Father, may I thank you again for another day. We thank you for all the blessings that you do for our community and provide for our community. We also at this thank you for all of our employees, our special responders who take care of us day in and day out. Right now, Lord, we just ask that you be with our friends and neighbors there in Texas as they're going through the ordeal that they're going through. We ask that you comfort those families who have lost loved ones, be with those all around us who are sick and shut in. Be with each and every one. Also be with the Hall family at the passing of Ms. Sharon Hall. Be with them and send your comforting angel around them. Be with the sustain in the meeting that we do that is be pleasing to you. In your son's name we pray, amen.
And if you join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we will start with approval of minutes from June 26, 2025. If I can get a motion in a second.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. I have the great honor of introducing to you all JD Chaney, who is the Executive Director of the Kentucky League of Cities, and also Gracie Kelly, who is Director of Government Affairs. And they are here to present a Friend of Cities Award to one of our legislators that represents Harden County and especially Elizabeth Town. And so we thought this would be a great setting for them to do that. And Mr. Chaney, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor.
If you don't mind.
Mayor, members of council and distinguished staff, always love. I've told you all this many times, coming to the city of Elizabeth Town. You all are well represented on the KLC Board of Directors. I note Mr. Fulkerson's presence here today as well. As a member of the, as a member of the KLC Board of Directors, but you all are well represented on KLC's board, have a lot of input, active members of the Attorneys Association, Clerks Association and others. So Elizabeth Town carries a big stick when it comes to statewide policy related to city governments and the way city governments operate in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. So I do appreciate you all giving us this venue to recognize our friend of cities. The league, Board of Directors votes every year on a handful of legislators who stand out, stand tall in particular, for city governments in what they do in Frankfurt in terms of the policy that they support and advocate for. This one, this one wasn't too hard. Senator Denine, in his first term, carried the, carried the Recovery Residence Legislation over on the Senate side. And then this year was named Chair of the VMAP Committee, Veterans Military Affairs and Public Protection. And what we've seen, I think, and we'll see a lot more of in the future, is a lot more of the public protection bills rolling through those committees that have traditionally rolled through local government committee or Senate, state and local government. But on police and fire issues in particular, you're seeing them roll through those committees. And so Senator Denine will have the chance to put that stamp of approval. If the chairman doesn't want to hear a bill or a chairman is supportive of a bill, that makes a big difference and a long way to go in terms of legislative passage. There are over a thousand bills introduced last legislative session. Only 139 of them, I believe, is the number Gracie that actually made it into law. And so the role of chairman in that committee, we had several pieces of legislation that came over to the Senate in late, at the late hour. And thank goodness Senator Denine was sitting in that chair, always advocating for the city of Elizabeth Town, but also remembering from where he came, which is sitting on a legislative body within a city and taking positions in opposition to legislation that would be harmful to your ability to govern locally. And so Air Board of Directors voted to bestow a 2025 Friend of Cities Award on Senator Matthew Denine. We'll take it. Mayor Protocol, let the senator speak and then can we do a picture with everybody?
First of all, I want to thank JD and the Kentucky League of Cities. And most importantly, I want to thank this council, the mayor and the associations that are right here in Elizabeth Town. It is definitely a team effort. And there's a lot of things that go into passing legislation, but a lot of it originates right here in the council. And when you take that into consideration, we have a very strong mayor, very strong council that advocate for things that will move this city forward. And I'm very grateful for that. I'm very grateful to sponsor and advocate for things that will move our city and our Commonwealth forward. And JD was correct. When it comes to my chairmanship on the VMAP Committee, I've put an emphasis on public protection. And so we have heard and we will be hearing lots of things related to disaster relief with our task force this summer. We will continue to advocate for supporting our police force, our firemen and our emergency responders. And we will look for legislation that enhances those areas in every aspect to make sure that the people of the Commonwealth are well taken care of. So I thank you again for the award, JD. I thank you all for making the trip down here. And it's an honor to be a former member of this council and to continue on the work that this council does every day. Thank you.
Okay, Judge Howard, are you ready?
Amen.
We're going to start with Municipal Order Number 432025, Purchase of Property at 415 Pear Orchard Road Northwest. If I can get a motion in a second to read, please.
Motion, second.
All in favor? Opposed? Judge Howard.
At a regular meeting of the city council held on the date set out below, after first being read, a motion to adopt the following municipal order was duly made, seconded and approved. Whereas the city identified the need to upgrade Pear Orchard Road and Pear Orchard Road Northwest corridor many years ago and is planning for phased improvements of the corridor, beginning with the Ring Road and Pear Orchard Road intersection. And whereas the city has developed engineering plans for the next phase of street improvements along this corridor and has identified properties for purchase to assure the new street and sidewalk improvements are designed and constructed in a safe manner. And whereas the city has offered to purchase property at 415 Pear Orchard Road Northwest based on an appraisal of the property and the owners of said property are willing to sell. Now, be it ordered by the city council, the city purchased the property located at 415 Pear Orchard Road Northwest from Yvonne Davis in an amount of $320,000. Be it for the order the mayor or his designee is hereby authorized to sign all agreements, contracts, deeds, closing documents and forms to protect this order, including having a title report and Phase One environmental review of the property to be purchased and completed. Read, adopted and approved the 7th day of July, 2025.
Any discussion? One thing I will add to you all is there will be a few more of these coming. Just to redo Pear Orchard Road like we want to do it and the way that the design is calling for, we're looking at about 85 pieces right away. And some of those are going to be houses, from what I understand. So it's quite the undertaking. So those out there that live out there who have expected and wanted this for a long time, it's starting, but we still encourage them to be patient because we've still got a lot of bureaucracy to go through before we can start moving dirt. So. Need a motion in a second to adopt.
Motion, second.
All in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Municipal Order 442025, approving incentives for A&amp;P Intertech Incorporated. If I get a motion in a second to read.
Motion, second.
All in favor? Opposed? Judge Howard.
At a regular meeting of the city council held on the date set out below, after first being read, a motion to adopt the following municipal order was duly made, seconded and approved. Whereas the city wishes to support the creation of jobs in the community and whereas A&amp;P Intertech, Inc. has completed the construction of their manufacturing facility located in Elizabeth Town in the TJ Patterson Industrial Park at 900 North Black Branch Road and will create new jobs in the community. Now, be it ordered, the city approves extending industrial development incentive to A&amp;P Intertech Incorporated as follows. The state KPI tax incentive to include a partial refund of the Elizabeth Town occupation license fee in the amount of 1% annually for 10 years for new jobs created based on approval by the Kentucky Economic Development Finance Authority with the actual reimbursement annually based on the number of new jobs created. Be it for the order the mayor and or his designee is authorized and directed to take all steps necessary to perfect this order. Read, adopted and approved the 7th day of July.
Any discussion? Seeing none, need a motion in a second to adopt, please.
Motion, second.
All in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. And that was quick. We will now open the floor for public comments if anybody has any. Yes, ma'am. If you don't, if you don't mind to go up and state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Judy Elliott. My address is September Drive. I have sent emails to everybody on the council in reference to storm water damage to my property in my home. It comes in through the basement. I have purchased pumps that I use in the yard and my driveway and use them to go over to Clemson Court to keep it down. Now, when it is very strong, my pumps aren't working. This has been reported. Now, my issues that I'm having on top of the city not looking into and making this a priority to fix is the fact that I was told that this has not been a known property issue, that it's not been an issue within Elizabeth Town. It has been an issue. I actually had somebody come by my house that owned the house in the 1980s that had issues. This is false information. So I'm, are you all aware of my email?
Sure.
I have not received any responses.
I just searched my email, I'm sorry. I don't have an email for you.
Let me ask you this. How many times has our stormwater crews been out to talk to you?
Okay, so Mr. Burns Barnes, I'll have to look up his name exactly. Robert, he retired in 1990. He's been out there.
Okay.
Troy Kugel. I was told this time around when Ms. Davis came that Troy Kugel was with...
He's with Public Works.
With Public Works and not this one. So, okay, as a citizen, when I report it, it should go to the right department. I've contacted storm damage, I've contacted city on multiple occasions. I bought this home in 2005 and have reported it multiple times myself, at least eight different times.
Do you have a list of when that was?
I'm sorry, what?
You happen to have a list of when you reported that and didn't get a response?
I don't have the exact dates, but I do have this one that's recently that I've reported.
So did Rita Davis and James Gray come out and look at your property when you reported it?
They came out that day, said they were going to look into it, ain't heard nothing. It's been over two weeks.
Okay, well, and obviously your complaint's important. It's important to all of us. When you send us an email, the first thing that I do is I triage that to the department that it needs to go to and make sure that they come out. That's why they, they came out. And then I will also tell you, we have a whole city full of people that have had issues, especially lately because we're 13, 14, 15 inches over the average amount of rainfall that we've had in an average year. So we've got issues everywhere that they're looking at and trying to take care of and trying to find ways to make better. And so I can promise you that they're doing that with yours as well, but they may not be able to get right back to you in the next two or three days because they've got a pretty good backlog. But I can assure you that they're working on it.
Okay, once again, like you said, you're assuring me that they're working on it this time. I was directly told from Ms. Rita Davis that this has never been turned in before.
Nope.
That is false information, truly false information. And of course, they're not here today, which I told them I would be showing up every time now because it, it has been pushed off and pushed off, never getting the right answers or anything like that.
When you say that you're getting water in your basement, is that groundwater? Is that runoff from the top of the ground coming in? I mean, how's it coming into your basement?
I have pictures and they're attached to the emails that I have sent also of them coming into my basement.
How? I mean, is it coming up through the floor? Is it coming through the walls?
No, it is coming...
Through the door?
Okay, so there is a ditch line that is an actual culvert that comes from Transylvania, circles around, goes to Harvard Drive. Supposed to go to Harvard Drive Creek that is not maintained for anything. I mean, I've got pictures all down Harvard Creek. The only thing that's even in the Harvard Creek area to be fixed is driveways that have been washed out is what's currently listed on there. No, it's my home that's actually getting current in there. So that ditch, when the creek backlogs, it backlogs that ditch. That ditch comes over my yard, into my driveway, into my garage, into my house.
Okay.
So it is coming in there with a current.
That's what I'm asking.
And that is what I've actually supplied.
Okay.
And I have more information, I have more pictures, but I did supply all those pictures. I'm showing where on my garage door, it's over two foot.
Are you talking about the June 16th rain?
On the June 16th rain, on the April rain, it does not even have to be a major rain that we've had just this year.
So you're getting water in your house on a normal rain?
Yes, that's the reason I have pumps myself. And I've mentioned that to Rita Davis. I said, hey, I'm pumping it out of my yard, my driveway with hoses over to Clemson Court for it to be pumped over there. That's not my responsibility. This is something the cities should have taken care of. It has been reported on multiple times for the last 20 years I know of. And now I have actually been in touch with personnel that own this house previously that says it's had issues since 1980. So this is overlooked, overlooked. So yes, this is a big city, but it needs to be taken care of.
Like I said, as soon as we got your email and as soon as they got your complaint, you said they came out that day, so we're going to take care of it the best we can. My only question was, on a normal rain, say we just get a normal shower, your basement's flooding. Is that what you're telling me?
I'm telling you that if there is any amount of rain that's not just a basic, basic rain, yes, I'm having to use pumps. There is no reason that I'm spending $600 for pumps that should be taken care of by the city.
You're having to use an extra sub pump? Is that what you're telling me?
I have a sub pump in my basement also.
Okay.
These are pumps that I'm actually putting closer to the ditch so it doesn't make it to my basement or my garage.
Okay. Well, like you said, Mrs. Davis unfortunately isn't here today because she could probably shed some more light on, on it for us, but I will definitely check with her and I will make sure that she responds to you in the next couple of days. How about that?
I appreciate that because like I said, I haven't heard no other response since then of, hey. And I've shared with everybody because once I was told again that this has not been addressed, they weren't aware of any situation that should have been documented already in the past that I know of on at least eight different occasions. And I can tell you who I've talked to. I might not have the specific dates that they were told in the back. That is the reason I took the man, took the manners I did. So now it is tracked officially.
How long have you lived there?
I bought in December of 2005.
Okay, and so before this past time, when was the last time that you reported an issue?
Probably three years ago because I figured out how to pump it.
Got you. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name's James Keith. I live at 311 College. Basically the same problem. I had two foot, maybe over in my basement. I've got a 40-foot river coming from Park Avenue and farther out, across the road behind the Park Avenue into our backyards. Once it floods, gets so deep, it's coming over my drive and into my basement.
Okay, 311 College. Have you called our Stormwater Department?
Well, I don't know if it's a stormwater, uh, Mr. Page is who I talked to.
So that's our city engineer, that, that's good too.
Haven't heard anything else from him.
When did you contact him?
It's been a couple of weeks.
Okay. 311 College.
Yep.
Mr. Keith, I've got you. There will be somebody reach out to you as well. If you don't care before you leave, if you can get with Mrs. Graham there in the back and give her a cell number, we'll make sure somebody calls you and gets on it.
All right, I've talked to Mr. Chaney too. He's trying to find out something.
So let me ask you this, other than June 16th, and I, and y'all aren't going to want to hear this, but I'm going to say it, we got four inches of rain in and out. We have, we have no system that's going to be able to handle that. We had basements that were flooded that people would call me and say, we've lived here 40 years and never had a drop of water in our basement, and we had water in their basements. So we, I'm just telling you, you can throw that one out the window. The rest of them, then I totally get.
Okay.
So I guess my question to you is, other than June 16th, are you still seeing that problem frequently on a, on a regular rain?
It has to be pretty heavy, but my point is, is the drains aren't sufficient enough. You know, it, it, it's not going to be, you know, they say climate change, you know, once or twice a year. I, you know, I can't afford to dish out.
I get that.
$10,000 for appliances and furnaces and, you know, you know, every time it rains.
I get that. Yep, so.
Okay, but I've, I've got issues with the city because, okay, my mom has lived on Henry and her basement has flooded since 1975.
So, so Henry Street, we are currently doing.
Well, since 75.
I understand that, but I wasn't here in 1975.
I know, sir.
Okay.
But I said, the, the city itself, I mean, there's a problem.
So we're spending.
We have insufficient drains, they're not big enough for the amounts of water and, I mean, we've, we built up everything in E-Town, black topped it and, you know. So, I mean, you're going to have more runoff and with bigger rains, yeah, I get it. It's a torrential downpour, it was, it was so long.
Sure.
But I shouldn't have to, I've raised my driveway up a foot. I built, put loads and loads of dirt in my yard to, to angle it away from my house. I, you know, and I'm, you know.
I get it.
I just shouldn't have to, and the, the, the city's comment to me was, well, maybe you should close your outside basement to block it off. That was the comment I got.
From who?
Mr. Page.
Here recently?
Yes.
Okay. Well, let me talk to him.
Follow up on that, uh, the Robert Burns Barnes, I don't remember.
Bush.
Bush, okay. That's what he told us too, we need to raise our yard.
Raise your.
Raise our yard. So that, what he's saying, I have, so it's not a common response, it's, it's very common of the, no other word, asking my comments that we're getting, it's not a true fix.
Okay, we'll look into it. Glad y'all came and talked to us. Anybody else? Okay, City Council Information Items. I will tell you, Councilman Fullerson's not here tonight. He is the president of the Hardin County Fair Board and they start the fair today at 4 o'clock, which is past time now. So he's got other obligations. This is basically all he misses all year long. He's also the president of the State County Fair Association. So he's pretty busy when it comes to this week. So I didn't want anybody to think that he just bailed out for the week. He's, he's doing a lot of good civic work. And our next meeting will be July 14th, 2025. Long Party is Wednesday, July 9th out at Freeman Lake. It's a great evening. If anybody can attend, I think you'll really enjoy it. And then I want to thank everyone that was involved with our Founder's Day fireworks on Saturday night. It was, it was pretty spectacular if everybody was, or if anybody was able to attend. We really appreciate all the hard work that our bid staff does. Beth, where'd you go? Raise your hand up. Y'all do a great job. Our fireworks display was great and our Public Works and Parks and Rec and Fire and Police and everybody that's involved in that is very much appreciated. It's a great event for the city. Do y'all have anything you want to add?
Ms. Elliott?
I, my email was wrong on what you sent to everybody. It's just dot G O, it should have been got dot D. I'll get somebody forwarded to me, but if you want to just double check it next time. I apologize and not receive it. But thank you.
I appreciate you looking into it and I'll make sure I send it out again if not tonight, tomorrow.
Well, I'll get somebody forwarded to me, so don't worry, but just if there's future.
And I don't like the reasons that you're attached there, I have plenty more, but that is the basic and it actually shows where I'm going to put sandbags down and can pumps. But if you got sandbags at home, you have pumps, it's a common.
I, I get it. I get it.
I've got three pumps.
If, make sure that you send all those to Rita Davis at Stormwater, so she has all those.
Her and.
James Gray, if I have your guess.
Yes, James Gray, I actually asked him to send them to me when I did. And I do have some videos, but unfortunately, my email's not allowing me to send the videos.
Okay. Well, hang on to them. Okay, sounds good. Appreciate you going.
Julie, I just sent that to you. I sent her.
Thank you.
We will not go to a closed meeting, so I need a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor? Opposed. Seeing none, motion carries. We are adjourned.